I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Brower.
Here.
Mayor Prettemory Popescu.
Here.
And Mayor Rigsey.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We will proceed to the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Brower.
Please join me for the invocation. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to get together and discuss the challenges and opportunities we have as a city. We invite you to guide our discussions and be present with us this evening for those deliberations. We ask that in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we would like to pull item number eight out of the consent
Now is time for the public to make any comments on items that are not on the agenda. Is anyone who'd like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to item number one, Council Bill R-2012-09 pertaining to Loma Linda University Medical Center Series 2007 B1 Bonds. Who is the discussant?
Mr. Mayor, you'd probably want to address the conflicts before we.
We have conflicts. Do we have to do a drawing?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, as you're aware, on previous matters related to the Medical Center and Blue Ask, four of the council have declared a conflict of interest based upon employment, all but Councilman Duper. So, we will invite the other four to draw straws so that we can get two who will participate under the rule of necessity. And I will, I've prepared the straws, two are marked "vote," meaning that you will be able to participate and vote on the item. And if you're ready, I'll do that.
I would like to ask our legal counsel, Mark.
Good evening. Let me try to briefly address what's in front of you. The actions that are proposed, adoption of a resolution authorizing issuance, and the enumerated documents and approval of the refinancing issuer's fee, are in connection with an effort by the Loma Linda University Medical Center to refinance $40 million of indebtedness from 2007. The way the 2007 B1 bonds were issued, they're priced weekly, and that requires a letter of credit. The Medical Center, and Steve Moore is here from there, who could elaborate on that in more detail, has found it advantageous if they can change the financial arrangement instead of from a weekly interest rate or a weekly mode to place it with the bank as a direct purchaser on a more permanent basis. Under the new financing, there would still be $40 million, but instead of fluctuating on a weekly basis, they will have a negotiated pricing with the bank on a more permanent basis. The ability of the bank to factor that out or involve more bondholders is limited. There can't be more than four bondholders, and each bondholder must be a commercial bank that is organized under federal or state law. These features, which the Medical Center and their counsel have found advantageous, are probably beneficial to the city. The city is processing this, as it did in 2007, as a conduit issuer. The obligation of the city is limited to get, to pay over whatever is paid by the Medical Center, and the reality is, that is immediately signed over to a bond trustee so that no dollars will come in and out of the city. The city has no liability to its general fund or otherwise to make payments on these bonds. So, the instruments in front of you are amended and restated bond indenture, which is kind of the mechanics of how the bonds work, and an amended and restated loan agreement. And the loan agreement speaks primarily to obligations of the Medical Center with regard to maintaining tax exempt status, complying with any disclosure requirements, and the like. The city would receive an issuer's fee in connection with the issuance of these bonds, and the Medical Center would also bear the cost of bond council charges and other fees and charges that may come up in connection with the issuance of the bonds. With that, I would be pleased to respond to any questions you may have.
Are there any risks to the city in this, financial or otherwise?
There are very, very limited risks in connection with this issue. For one thing, there is not a public offering of the bonds. In addition to it being a conduit issue, which would affirmatively cause the city to not be liable to make payment, and all of the issues on behalf of the Medical Center are conduit issues. In this case, there aren't, there is no public marketing for sale of the bonds. So, even compared to other conduit issues, there is much less complexity to the security side because there's not a public offering of these bonds. In that extent, and while I don't think there is serious exposure or significant exposure now, by having the bonds placed with one bank, there is, if anything, a reduction in what already is a very, very tiny bit of exposure. I should add that from a timing standpoint, if the City Council approves the action, a notice will be given of mandatory purchase date, and the new bonds are expected to be in place May 1st.
Are there any specific benefits to the city? I understand how it would benefit the Medical Center. What about the city?
The city will get an issuer's fee of.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Outside of the fifty thousand fee.
So, there's a $50,000 issuer's fee, and then, you know, as an important corporate citizen in town, the Medical Center will derive benefits which they could, they could better describe to you, I think. But, there's a direct dollar benefit to the city in terms of the issuer's fee. And I understand that the Medical Center representatives and the city manager have come to that figure, and that's agreeable to all.
Is there anything else that you'd like to add, Jerb?
Well, the fee for this will be $50,000 to the city, and the university will pay a separate fee for our legal counsel.
I don't know if you want to hear from Mr. Moore, but he's in attendance.
I just had a question about how the $50,000 fee was arrived at, because it sounds a very round number. It doesn't sound like it's per hour or anything like that.
Diana can help me with that.
We arrived at it, it's one-eighth of one percent of the principal amount. That's outstanding, so, and because of the limited involvement of the city, we decided it should just be a one-time fee at that point.
Okay, is there comparables or something like that?
We do have a resolution that sets fees, and it's usually one-eighth of one percent for the initial fee, then an annual ongoing fee is the resolution, and then there is allowance for if there's not as complicated issues of debt that you can do, that you can adjust the fee down because our involvement will be limited. So, we went with that route.
I kind of expected you to say it's whatever Wall Street would have charged divided by 50 or something like that, but, you know, I just thought maybe, so it's based on prior precedent?
Prior, yeah.
Okay.
We do have an adopted resolution that set the fee, and I believe that at the time it was adopted, it was based upon the financial consultant's recommendation of what kind of standard fees were at the time, kind of for different types of issues. So, is what the language reads in the resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Any comment from the consumer of the money?
My name's Steve Moore. I'm Chief Financial Officer at Loma Linda University Medical Center, and I just want to thank the City Council and the city staff for their work with us, and obviously, the city's counsel as well, to help us obtain this refinance. It will take some level of risk away from the financing that is in place on behalf of Loma Linda University Medical Center, and we are definitely appreciative of the relationship that we are able to have with the city, its counsel, and its staff, enabling us to move these types of things forward in a very positive fashion. Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's a good-looking girlfriend you brought with you, too, by the way. Future councilman, I'm sure.
So, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll move approval of, let's see, where are we here? Of Council Bill R-2012-09.
And I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. You're free to go. Okay, item two. Sandbag, items are always a big thing.
We've only sat here for the last two years together like this.
Okay. Presentation by Gary Coho.
Good evening. I'm here to speak about the I-10 Tippecanoe-Anderson interchange project, the reconstruction. Just to give you a status where we're at, it's proceeding well. The first phase of the project is ready to go to construction. In addition, the right-of-way acquisition for Phase Two is well underway. You've probably seen the Denny's restaurant, and now it's no longer standing there, and we bought quite a few of the houses there, too, so it is going well. The project was broken into two phases in July of 2011, to position Phase One for being eligible for corridor mobility improvement account funds as part of the Prop 1B state funds, and to expedite the project. Phase One will construct the eastbound auxiliary lane between Waterman On-ramp and the Tippecanoe Off-ramp, reconstruct the eastbound off-ramp to provide two-lane exit, widen to four lanes at the intersection with Anderson, widen the San Tepateo Creek Bridge, and construction of a concrete box where the trapezoidal channel is today, there on the south side of the freeway. The eastbound off-ramp will be open during construction. There will be some lane closures and some night closures while construction goes on. The April CTC agenda, California Transportation Commission, we have put on a request on there for $10 million of this CMIA funds, or corridor mobility improvement account funds, for the Phase One construction. Award to the construction is contracted, scheduled for this summer, with construction commencing in August. Construction will take approximately 12 months for the first phase, and has an estimated cost of $18.6 million. It's important that we start construction in August because we want to be out of the channel or the creek before the rainy season starts in November. As you're aware by the memo dated April 9th from JARB, that the IBDA's funding for this project is currently in question. The question on IBDA's funding arose when the redevelopment agencies were resolved statewide. To keep this project moving forward and to allow Phase One to proceed to construction, we have been discussing with the city staff of Loma Linda and San Bernardino, where they would cover IBDA's share until such time as the issues with IBDA are resolved. Each city's amounts to cover the Phase One construction and the Phase Two right-of-way is $3.85 million, and that was included. What JARB is showing in his memo was for the Phase Two construction, too, but we thought we'd proceed this at a step at a time, through the Phase One construction and the Phase Two right-of-way. Because once you start right-of-way, there is a risk if you stop purchasing right-of-way. There's something they call clopping damage, where the actual properties are already purchased, they can come back after us for damages because we moved them out when there was not really a need for the property for the project. We are hoping that the IBDA funding issues will be resolved prior to Phase Two construction proceeding, which is scheduled for late 2013. If it is not resolved, an amendment to the agreement we've been talking to staff with may be required. Phase Two right-of-way cost is $36 million. The construction cost is $17 million. So, the right-of-way and construction on this project are almost equal as far as value, both running around $36 million bucks. Start of construction again at Phase Two is late next year. That's my end of my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
The reason I bring this to the council is because we received a letter and draft agreement from Sandbag requesting additional logo match from the city of Loma Linda, just in case IBDA cannot obligate the money based on the elimination RDA. So, are you saying that with going with just Phase One, our existing agreement is okay to where it is? So, this way, we don't have to redo the agreement?
We've still got to come back with the other agreement just between the cities and Sandbag, which would, again, just call up for the $3.85 million.
Oh, okay.
We still have to do that, because right now, the way agreement is written, IBDA has committed some funds that right now, what they're dissolving with the RDA agencies, we don't think they can provide at this time. So, yes, we still have to do this other agreement. And that's, but after listening to the cities, and we understand it was the finances of the cities and be able to come up with a full, I think it was six-point-something million dollars at that time, we thought it'd be in the interests of everybody, let's get Phase One done, get the Phase Two right-of-way going, go with the $3.85 million, and then come back later if we need to. Hope we don't.
So, is Phase One within our IBDA, San Bernardino, Loma Linda, one-third each share? Is the $3.85 million you're asking for Phase One equivalent to what we would have paid for both phases before?
Both phases before.
It was, our share is 4.2 million.
So, this is below our commitment, anyway?
Yes.
Correct. Which we do have money for, for this Phase One.
Whose opinion is it that the IBDA money may not come through?
Right now, it is the Department of Finance with the state.
Have your staff had a meeting with the folks from the IBDA in regards to this specific concern?
They, we have talked to IBDA staff, and our attorney has read, Sandbag's attorney has read the stuff that's received from the Department of Finance and from IBDA, and there's still an opinion. It is not settled yet. Department of Finance has had the same opinion, even though IBDA is appealing this, and again, this is just what I've been heard through our attorneys, they're appealing it, but it is not settled. So, at this time, we'd be at risk if we move forward with the current agreement.
I happened to talk to the IBDA attorney this afternoon when this item came up, and Mr. Mike Burrows, and they both suggested that the folks from Sandbag come and talk to them specific about this issue. They have a different opinion as to whether the money's available or not. They truly believe that it's safe, and they shouldn't be affected by the RDA issues. But I think it's probably best for them to express that view to you. Obviously, the agreement we have is through them, and we would expect and get their clarification before we move forward on our end. Obviously, changing that agreement would force us to spend additional $2 million that we do not have. So, prior to even contemplating that, it would probably be best that we talk to the folks who offered to help us with that. So, that would be, I think, would be the best step forward before we deviate too much about into discussions as to whether there's enough money or not, because I think there's a difference of opinion as to whether the money's available or not.
I think, again, what I'll need to do, then, is take, have our attorney discuss it with their attorney.
Exactly.
I mean, it's beyond my legal knowledge on this stuff. One thing I didn't mention, too, the agreement we have between Sandbag, the cities, and IBDA still stays in place. When this gets resolved, they're still, they're still committed to that amount of funds, they would just pay more in Phase Two.
I was just going to say, we, both Dr. Daley and I, sat on the IBDA board a couple weeks ago, and as far as they're concerned, this project's moving forward, and they don't know of any issue why it wouldn't. So, again, I defer to my colleague, and that's.
I believe you already allocated close to half a million dollars towards it, to Sandbag.
Correct.
But, just exactly what my colleague said, this appears to be an issue that needs to be worked out with IBDA first before it's brought here.
Okay, will do.
I'm a little confused as well. It sounds like dueling attorneys are dueling interpretations of this new law, so hopefully that can get sorted out. On a more pragmatic level, one of the most common complaints that we get at the university has to do with the intersection of Redlands Boulevard and the I-10 freeway.
Anderson.
Yeah, Anderson, I'm sorry. Anderson, Redlands Boulevard, and the I-10 On-ramp Off-ramp there. How much is, are you, I guess I'm curious to know if you're anticipating that that bottleneck is going to be significantly worse during Phase One to start with, and, well, let's start with that. I'll ask one question at a time.
I mean, there's always impacts when you have construction, so it does impact traffic operations.
Currently, the traffic will back up, clear back to Academy Drive on a bad day, and inch its way through. Is that going to get worse? Are we talking about traffic backing up to the university?
Well, as far as that movement, it should be fine. It shouldn't make it any worse. The improvements are going to be on the eastbound off-ramp.
Okay.
And the auxiliary lane, so, but the traffic, you've seen that back up in the mornings, too.
Yeah.
And it backs up to Waterman and beyond, and it's probably going to have some impact to it. But we think by putting these improvements in place, by having a two-lane exit.
Yeah.
And four lanes at the terminus, it'll give us some relief till we get Phase Two completed.
And can you tell us a little bit more about the timetable? You already indicated that the project's scheduled to begin August 12, I'm sorry, August of 12, which I'm pleased about, because I've been hearing and reading about this since the late '90s now, so to hear that it's actually, has a date, we're going to begin is good news. Where does it go from there? How long does it take to complete Phase One? When does Phase Two start, and what are we looking at as a termination?
Phase One, we're looking at around a year to complete. Then we want Phase Two coming in right in behind it. In fact, we're, if we're lucky, we'll get the same contractor, if it's a good contractor, right behind, so, the total project would probably take around two years to complete. And the biggest thing, why it takes that much time is because of staging the traffic.
Yeah. Okay. Exciting prospect, but it could be a long two years in the city of Loma Linda.
Yeah.
A couple of follow-up questions over on December Nardino's side. How many properties are affected that you're having to deal with as far as obtaining right-of-way?
I think it's 30, 30-something residents.
And how far along are you in that process?
We are quite a ways along now. I can't, I don't have the status of how many properties are purchased, but it's moving right along. In fact, you can see some of them on the east end of that development, where they got them already boarded up and ready to be demoed, so.
So, the length of time it's taken to start Phase Two is related to that, or just other factors involved in trying to get the project moving?
That's part of it. I mean, we have those two old gas stations.
Okay.
There's, we got to, you have to do a lot of testing, they're tough to acquire, and that's what's really taken the time.
Thank you.
Are you anticipating any opposition to the eminent, you know, you're having to exercise the eminent domain power?
I didn't ask that question of my staff before I came. I haven't heard of any yet on there. I think we're still in the negotiation process. We had to make three offers before we even consider going through the Ron Pro. I think, I think if we haven't got response, or favorable response here in the next month or two, we probably will start the process. Okay?
Thank you very much. Okay, so there's no action on that. It sounds like it doesn't really affect anything until Phase Two starts, it doesn't change anything, so, okay. So, we have the consent calendar minus item eight.
I'll go ahead and move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. No old business, new business, modification of city council meeting schedule. This is my item. I consider that when you have city council meetings where you start breaking records for short duration of meetings, maybe we're having too many meetings. So, my suggestion is to reduce us from one and a half meetings per month on average to just one a month, keeping the second date available and just not slotted to have an actual meeting unless we need it. So, about half of our months are two council months, and half of them are one council months, and why don't we just make them all one council months? I'd like to hear your opinions on that.
I guess I'd like to hear from staff in terms of whether that risks holding some of the city business up, or if once a month would be adequate to keep us up to speed.
Let me start. It's okay with me, as long as we keep the second meeting, just in case we have important items that will be bringing to the city council. And as long as you, to keep in touch with you, by the conventional way that I've been doing, is within every two weeks, I send you an internal memo to keep all of you informed of what's going on in the city. If you think that's adequate for staff to keep you informed, that's fine with me, so.
Is there anybody in the public who would go through withdrawal symptoms of? I know some of you are regular attendees.
Dick Wiley, city of Loma Linda, or live in the city of Loma Linda, has a question then. Does that mean salaries will be cut, too? Or, you get the full pay for the month with one less meeting? You know, I mean, I hear cutting back on a day, but I'm just curious as to whether it's financial with that, or whether it's just the meeting.
In the past, when there was a redevelopment agency, there was a per-meeting payment that went to the redevelopment agency board members, and since that's gone, there's no particular productivity allotment for the pay. So, I don't think there's any plans to change that, but I suppose that if it can happen to county supervisors, it can happen to anybody. Go ahead.
City council members' salaries are set by the government code, and so, there would be no change until, until the next election. Any change that you would make would not be effective until the next council members are seated. So, we need to be aware of that.
That's correct. If you chose to make a change in salary, it would, it would not take effect till the next election, but.
What about the peculiar circumstance of our recent election? Has the election already occurred, or is it the seating that matters?
Well, the seating. Your salaries are not based upon city council meetings in particular, it's based upon all the work you do throughout the entire month, including all these ancillary meetings and boards that you sit on, so, although it might be a reduction of one meeting, it's certainly not a 50% reduction in your workload.
Just a general comment, a lot of the time, the public may not necessarily see the fact that the amount of time that we spend here is not always reflective by being in a meeting. Many of us come and have meetings with staff on a weekly basis, so there is still Many of us come and have meetings with staff on a weekly basis, so there is still continual effort and time and energy spent on keeping up to breast and keeping informed prior to a lot of these meetings. I suspect that if we limit it down to once a month, that there might be some savings as far as limited in some of the staff work that's used in preparing for the meetings and using the facility. It might be minimal in that sense, but over at the IVDA where we have scheduled meetings twice a month, it's not uncommon that if there's not enough items on the agenda, they cancel one meeting and to try to consolidate everything. I think, given the fact that our cities had less issues with less activity, it would make sense that if we can conduct the business with one meeting a month, we're comfortable with that. And I also believe that having the option of adding on any month additional meetings, and when this item was put together, I talked to Jarb and Conrad about this, and one of the concerns was sometimes planning commission meetings will have an item and they don't want to have to wait a whole month before it actually gets in front of us. And in those circumstances, or perhaps there's a bill that needs to be paid in which the demands register needs to be approved, we reserve the option of meeting. And I suspect that as much as we might approve this, we're going to find ourselves still meeting uncertain months, twice a month.
But on an as-needed basis rather than just planning on it. So does the item as agendized give us the right to take an action or do we make suggestions to staff to make it happen or how's this best handled?
Pardon me. You certainly may take an action to approve the recommended schedule that's before you. It was agendized for modification of the meeting schedule, so you can do that this evening with the direction to staff that if additional meetings are necessary, that those take place on the scheduled meeting nights.
And I understand we would also have the option if we have a vacation conflict of having a meeting on the fourth instead of the second?
Correct. Those remain as regular meeting nights.
But I mean, a second, we could have one meeting, just the different date.
Correct.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council?
I'll go ahead and move the item.
Since it's my item, I'll second it.
I will abstain since most of these dates won't involve myself.
Okay, so there's any other discussion about it? Okay, is there anybody opposed? Hearing no opposition, it passes. One abstention. We can always undo it on a moment's notice. Okay, any reports of councilmen?
Just a public service announcement regarding, I always encourage our residents and interest of economic activity to try to spend their monies here in Loma Linda, whether it be for food, gas, or other necessities. I know that the university bookstore is one business that sells higher-priced items and we get a fair amount of sales tax from that, and they have plenty of iPads in stock for those who might be interested. Of course, we would also welcome anybody who may be interested in buying new cars. That's always a very good investment in our community. So we just want to encourage all of you to eat and sleep and be merry in Loma Linda as much as you can. Thank you.
I had the opportunity to attend the city-county conference a week ago, and it was a good conference, about the same as it's been the last couple of years, but good topics were discussed. Hopefully, I didn't embarrass Jarb too much, but I had to brag about our city a little bit a few times, some of the things that we're doing. It was interesting that the county basically suggests topics and tries to encourage discussing and discussion. And a lot of the things the county was encouraging people to do or discuss were things that we've already done, so it was really kind of neat. And then also, I had a meeting with the California League of Cities and their Public Safety Policy Committee, which I sit on, and we're still looking at things like AB 109 and some of the other issues that the state has caused, so it's been kind of busy for me this month.
Okay, any reports of officers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I want to, I would like to update the city council on our oversight board for the successor agency. This afternoon, we just had our second oversight board meetings. The first meeting was scheduled on March the 22nd, I mean, the 20th, I'm sorry, March 20th. And at that meeting, the board did approve the draft Recognize Obligation Payment Schedule, or known as ROPS, for the January 1st of this year through June 30th of this year. And today, they did approve the final ROPS for the first six months of this year, and they did approve the draft ROPS for the period of July 1st to December 31st of this year. There were a lot of questions that came up through the meetings that there's still a lot of challenge ahead of us. So just, and we did have the member from, from the city, which is the mayor, was elected as a chair for the board. Conrad is representing the staff. We have Cameron Brown as a vice chair. He come from the Redlands School District. We have staff, Mr. Steve Salotis from the Valley College, and Doc Hedricks, he's the general manager from San Marino Valley Municipal Ward District. And a representative from the county board supervisor, her name is Victoria, I can't remember her last name.
Osterman?
Yes, Osterman. So we're still missing a public at large representative from the county, and they're supposed to meet and then ask them to come to our meeting, so. And as a matter of fact, we are probably one of the first city that started the oversight board meeting in the county.
I think as of last week, there were two cities in the county, but that's it, just two cities.
And another thing is their deadline that we have to meet from the Department of Finance. It's just amazing, there's a lot of deadlines, and they don't give us a lot of time. So thank you, Diana, for, and her staff, for doing a lot of work, trying to get the list of the obligation payment schedule done and to be able to submit to state for review, so a lot of works.
Mr. Mayor, I might also add that prior to council meeting tonight, we did have the groundbreaking ceremony for the memorial to the events of September 11, which all council members attended. We've seen, I think, the illustrations before they're developed, and it's clear that there's a really a classy element for our community that's being developed as a place for remembrance and reflection of those events. I think the community will start to see in the next days some skirting that goes up the west end of the Pacific Center in front of the fire station. So you see what appears to be a mini-construction zone evolving. That is, in fact, what's happening, and the vision is that will culminate in some sort of an unveiling in or around September 11.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, then the city council is adjourned and we'll move to the city council as successor agency agenda. We'll dispense with a roll call. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Is there any desire by members of the public to speak on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, conflicts of interest I do not believe apply, but if so, we'll deal with them. The consent calendar is for your...
I'll make a motion, remove the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion about that?
I would like to add that the board oversight board gave approval behind the this afternoon.
Okay. So any further discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. No old business, no new business, we're adjourned. We'll move to the Loma Linda Housing Authority agenda. We'll dispense with a roll call. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to comment on this agenda? Any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Was there a report that was attached to that? In parentheses says secretary.
I would like to get more clarification on that as well.
The former redevelopment agency had a number of programs that it funded. One of the programs was a first-time homebuyers program. With the elimination of the redevelopment agency and the creation of the housing authority, all of the programs, with the exception of the housing purchase program, have been suspended. We have maintained the housing purchase program because of the affordable housing covenants that go with it. We have 45 homes that are affected by the covenants, and currently, we have eight that are available for sale. Hopefully, we will be able to get title insurance, so we will be able to sell them. The thought was that instead of limiting it to first-time homebuyers, and that definition was that households would not have owned a home within the past three years, that was the definition of first-time homebuyer, that we expand that to include others as well. And that would enlarge our field of potential applicants and perhaps then we could dispose of our properties that we've had to maintain. That's basically it in a nutshell. There may be some that we can get outside financing for, but most likely, many of them we will fund, we will lend, be the lender ourselves.
Did you say a first homebuyer is somebody who hasn't owned a home in three years?
Three years.
But outside of that, they're considered a first-time homebuyer again?
After three years, you could be. But you also have to, you know, meet the income qualifications for a low-income household, and that's based upon the family size and the gross annual income of the household.
Just a comment, I definitely favor this action. The worst thing we could have is potentially empty homes with all the issues and problems that may arise for maintenance. And number two, obviously, we want to meet whatever needs there are as quickly as possible, so it seems like a wise recommendation.
Pam, we talked about the title insurance before. Does that look like that's something we're going to be able to do?
We are making headway, part of it due to the action of the oversight board, so we have to wait for the underwriters for the title companies to give us their okay, and we can move forward.
With that, I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay. No aggressive seconding tonight. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Any member reports? Any reports of officers? Then we're adjourned, and that's the last agenda item for tonight. Good night.